This is regular meeting of the Navasota City Council on the 26th day of February, 2024, in council chambers. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Mr. Fultz. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode. And visitors, if you would please sign in. And if you wish to speak under visitor's remarks, please fill out the form found in back, stick your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business, and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Betty Tompkins of Salem House of Blessings, then followed by the pledges.
Good evening. Let us all bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we come before your presence this evening, God, with thanksgiving in our hearts. And Father, I'm bringing the city of Navasota before you right now, God, in the name of Jesus, God, and I ask that you would just bless them, our mayor, Lord God, our city councilman, Lord God, the city workers, the police department, the first responders, Lord God. I bring them all before you, Lord God, and thanking you for them being in their positions, Lord God, and protecting them throughout their jobs and their opportunities to get out and mingle and be a part of the city of Navasota, God. And I ask that you would just bless them, God. Show favor upon them, God. Cause your face to shine upon them and give them your peace, oh, God. And let them make wise decisions for the people of Navasota and the city of Navasota, God. Let them have them in mind, and Father, not selfish reasons or not selfish decisions, Lord God, but wise, godly decisions for this city of Navasota. And we bring them all before you, the entire town, Lord God. Whatever is needed, Father, let every need be met. In the mighty and precious name of Jesus, we pray, and let us all say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honoring Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item 3 is remarks of visitors. We have Brenda Minor and Anes Qual.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brenda Minor and this is my aunt, Anes Qual. We are here today to speak concerning the zoning for the manufactured homes. My aunt is 84 years old, and she was born and raised here in the Navasota area. But she lived her adult life in the Houston area. So in August of 2023, she decided it was time to move back home. And what she was going to do is purchase a mobile home and put it on her lot. Her lot is located down on Saul Street. It used to be, when I was living in this area, it used to be called Chase Street. I'm not sure when the name changed. But our family home is also located on that particular street. And it's been there as long as I can remember. And I'm 67 years old, so it's been there for quite a while. And we own also three other, three or four other lots on that same street. And so that's where my aunt was going to put her manufactured home. So she got approved for it, and then she ran into problems after she started installing all of her utilities and getting ready to move the home in. She couldn't do it because of the zoning restrictions for that particular, for the city limits of Navasota. So we were told that we would have to put a modular home there. So we looked around. We've been doing this ever since August of last year. And we were trying to find something that was going to fit into her budget. It's her and my cousin. She has a daughter that lives with her. And we found it's just not feasible to do a modular home or a stick-built home, because you're talking about going from 30 to 60 feet per square feet for this home, a manufactured home, to $150 to $250 per square feet for a modular home or stick-built home. So what we're here to do is ask that y'all make some type of adjustments, if not changing the zoning for that particular area. We're not trying to fight the city of Navasota and get changes, you know, for all over. It's just that in that particular area, there's also the waterway system that's located there, which is about a third of a block from my grandparents' home. And we know that it's not, if we built another home and put it there, we would never get the value of that home back because of what's located in that area. So this is why we are here today speaking, to see if we can get some type of adjustment, you know, for this, where she can put a home that she can afford and be comfortable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I want to let you know that we have a workshop scheduled for March 25th at 4:30. At that workshop, we'll be talking about rain barrels, so as a way for providing some irrigation and water needs to homes, as well as manufactured homes. And so that'll be on that discussion. And also, as a point of information, there has recently been a modular home installed at the corner of 8th and Wilson Street out by the cemetery. So if you want to drive by there, you can actually see what a modular, if you don't know what a modular home looks like, you can drive by there and take a look at that.
Where is it again?
At 8th Street and Wilson.
Let's see if that's the only one with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 4 is the staff report. Mr. Weeks?
Mayor and council, I'm going to have Peggy Johnson, our HR director, come up and introduce a couple of new employees.
My member, council members, Peggy Johnson, human resource director. Tonight, I would like to introduce our three newest employees here at the city of Navasota. We have one from the police department, and we have two coming from our public works department. The first one I would like to introduce to you is Jerry Wayne Herschel. Hurst, I'm sorry. Hurst was hired by the city of Navasota on January the 18th, 2024, as a school resource officer in our police department. He's born in Navasota, Texas in 1966, attended Navasota ISD, and graduated from Navasota High School in 1984. He graduated from the police academy in Bryan, Texas in 1990. He started his law enforcement career with the College Station Police Department. He moved to his wife's hometown of Quitman, Texas in 1990, and continued his law enforcement career there until he retired on December the 31st of 2023. Mr. Hurst comes to the city with 33 years of law enforcement experience and have numerous licenses and certifications. After retirement, he moved back to Grimes County and looked forward to serving the citizens of his hometown. So if you would help me to welcome. Next, we have Martin Solis. Was hired by the city of Navasota on January the 29th as a water wastewater operator, I mean, water wastewater treatment operator one in our public works department. He was raised and graduated from Navasota High School in 2009. He comes to the city of Navasota with 13 years of industrial experience. He's a member of the Lions Club and the Masons Lounge. His hobby is barbecuing. So if y'all would like to help me with that. Next, we have Donald Mason. He was hired with the city of Navasota on February the 5th as a natural gas technician in our public works department. Mr. Mason is a lifelong resident of Navasota. He is a proud graduate of Navasota High School, class of 2000. Donald has two children, Donovan and Amari, that he enjoys spending time with. He comes to the city of Navasota with 15 years of industrial experience, and he's excited to be working for the city of Navasota. So if you would help me to welcome him.
Somewhere I have a list of what defines what.
Jose, no, Jose, you got to come up there, too.
Just him trying to put that off.
I know.
Right?
He doesn't want his mug in the paper, I guess.
I see. Oh, that's everybody light.
Yeah. Welcome.
Yeah, I have questions about that.
Mayor and council, I'm going to have John McKay, our graduate engineer, come up and give an update on our CIP project.
It doesn't sound real good, does it?
Good evening, mayor and council. John McKay, graduate engineer. I'm just giving y'all some updates on the CIP project. CIP projects in general, actually, because we do have some good news. I'm right now finishing up the proof to advertise our water well for bid this month, at the end of this month. That's the first step in the actual construction of the new water plant out there. So water well is, we're going to be opening up proposals on the 25th of March for that. The CIP project, the big project in general, where we're at, I came to you last time, talked to you a little bit about insertion valves. We've so far found four spots that need a valve. We thought we found a fifth. Don't think that one's necessary now. And there'll be, we found a couple of line stops. Those are the other ones that we talked about. Either way, that's kind of where we are. We're at Miller Street. We're at Victoria. We're at Washington by North Post Oak. And we were thinking we were going to be at Neal, but we weren't. The line turns a different direction. But we're also, the crews, while we're working on this area for these water tie-ins, you'll see the crews have moved. They're over, they're doing a lot of work now on East Hill is beginning, as well as Bar Far. And you're going to see Duke Street probably pretty soon behind that. So those are my biggest, my biggest updates. We've got stuff for the wastewater plants being built. We've received our first invoice for that. So those projects are rolling forward as well. Any questions?
Any estimate on when the paving is going to start?
We're still working on that schedule. It's going to be as soon as we get these water tie-ins made. That's what, that's what's holding us up, is these water tie-ins. Neal Street, there is, to get into specifics, Neal Street has a six-inch line on the south side, a 10-inch line on the north side. And we, the six-inch line, every map we have shows it continuing out to Ivy Street. Well, we dug that up today to try to isolate it.
Wasn't there.
Wasn't there. That also requires a valve down at, near Washington, across on Miller Street. There is an eight-inch line that runs unvalved underneath Washington to the main there, Washington and Hillside. So we're working on getting those installed. I should have the schedule. We got the final price on those specific ones, late Friday, gave approval to them today, to schedule the contractor to make some of those tie-ins. I do not have that schedule yet either. It's hot off the press. But when I know that, I will let Jason know.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we're going to have Jennifer Rayna, Public Works Director, come up and give you the results of our annual natural gas audit.
Good evening. Jennifer Rayna, Public Works Director. I wanted to kind of inform you of our results. We actually had two natural gas audits in the month of February. Our annual TML audit, we just got the results today. We had a 99%, which is an excellent score. Since I've been here, we've only received one 100. So they're not easy to get perfect, but 99% is pretty close. And then on the 13th and the 15th of February, the Railroad Commission performed their annual comprehensive natural gas audit, which is, Railroad Commission is a state agency that regulates natural gas utilities. And recently, myself, Fabiana, Michael Bean, and William Clark did a two-day audit with the state agency, and we also got a perfect score. So I want to say thank you to them.
Good job.
Good job. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Jennifer. That's all I got, mayor.
All you got?
Okay.
All right, folks. The Texas Birthday Bash is this weekend. If you haven't got your tickets.
You're going to do boards and commissions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I can do that at the end.
Yeah, okay.
Texas Birthday Bash coming up this weekend. If you hadn't got your tickets, you can still go to texabirthdaybush.com, get tickets. I think the weather is improving by the day. So at least Saturday's going to be good for sure. Friday's a little iffy, but I think it's going to work out. So bring out everybody and come enjoy the fun. The community challenge that we've been participating in, as far as the community goes, it ends on March 3rd. So if you have any activities to enter, be sure and get that entered in before March 3rd, so the city and the school can get those points. The Chamber of Commerce banquet is, annual banquet is Friday, the March 8th. And Lucy asked that I mention that tonight so that y'all know that you can still get tickets. It's at the Expo Center again next Friday week. The next farmer's market is the 9th. That's coming up on March 9th at the library. And just down the road a bit, the Groovy Grapes Wine Walk put on by the Chambers coming up on the March 30th. And then April 5th, down the road a bit, is American Red Cross Blood Drive at the Methodist Church. And any reports from council on boards and commissions?
The parks board met.
Yeah.
And I did not attend the meeting. So if Mr. Weeks...
Well, I was there. I was there. But yeah, so the Parks Board met. It was really good attendance. There was a lot of positive energy and feedback we received from the Parks Board. Basically, we're going to look at doing a Parks master plan to determine what we need. We're going to start out looking at the whole block over at Navasota Center and Brewley Elementary Park there, as well as the swimming pool. That's the first area concern we want to look at immediately. Then look at doing a full Parks master plan next year. Parks Board agreed that first thing we need to start doing is taking care of what we have now, going in and trying to clean it up. And what that means is, is any safety issues that we have at parks, let's address those. And so myself and Assistant City Manager in Public Works will be going out next, maybe it's tomorrow, actually. I think it's tomorrow, taking a tour of the parks and trying to identify some of those. So if there's pieces of equipment that's rusted or broken, it's coming out, we will be getting a quote to have discussions about demoing the pro shop and just trimming some trees and getting a bunch of the stuff cleaned up. We'll do a lot moving forward. But the Parks Board challenged themselves to, I think only one of the members actually went to the parks and looked at them all before the meeting, and so challenged the other members to go out now while there's not any foliage or anything on the trees, so you actually can see what's going on. But a great discussion and look forward to bringing something, we'll bring a review back to you, what we presented to them at your workshop that we're going for the budget on the 18th.
They all have real good interest in.
It's good.
That would be it?
Yeah, okay. Anyone else?
Just on the schedule, we have the primaries voting next Tuesday. Correct. Early voting is still this week. Early, early voting all this week, I think.
Until Friday, yep.
And then when does early voting start for council positions and the charter?
April. It's, I'm going to say it was the last week of April. I'm sorry, I didn't bring that with me today.
Okay, but that election.
I think it's around the 22nd or 23rd.
That election stays May?
Fourth.
May the 4th. May the 4th be with you.
And mayor and council, I just kind of wanted to update you that hopefully, March 11th will go live with our new agenda management system. But I will send an email out so you all know to look for maybe Agenda Quick. It's going to be the new company instead of Agenda Ease, but I'll keep you up to date on it, if we can get it all figured out.
Excited about it?
Oh, yes. But you know, any new program, you got to learn it.
Yeah, oh, yeah. That's right. Okay. Item 5 is consideration and possible action on resolution number 761-24, City of Navasota Logic Resolution to Become A Participant of the Local Government Investment Cooperative or the Logic Pool.
Good evening, mayor and council. So Mr. Weeks and I are both the investment officers for the city. And we are entrusted to make wise investments. So I would like to recommend that we become participants in the Logic Pool. So we currently participate in three investment pools already. The Logic Pool is, just has a slight, little bit more interest right now. We have some CDs maturing, and this was brought forth at the January 22nd council meeting. So two CDs that are maturing within this fiscal year. And I think we should move those funds once they mature into this new investment pool. So I crunched the numbers. And right now, those CDs, they have interest rates of 1.6 and 0.65%. So it's nothing. With the new investment pool, as of the 19th, the interest rate was at 5.4849. So you look at where we would be by the end of FY '25, and the city can stand just off of those, those two investments, make just under $34,000 in interest rather than $7,500.
Based on that rating and the diversification, the interest rate before they change their mind.
Yeah, interest rates are good right now. So, and it's an investment pool. It's a very rated pool, too.
I move we approve resolution 761-24.
Second.
Is this, yeah, is this pool, other than having a little better interest rate, is it significantly different from the other pools we're in?
It's not. It's in, it's a, just an investment pool like the other three that we're already in. It's just slightly more interest.
And one of the things back there, it says that it's a trust.
So I think that was in the original, so the part you're looking at, so that's the participation agreement and trust instrument. That's the way it was put together back. Logic was one of the first investment pools that was, that was around before text pool. And so the last page there where you're talking about, it was originally put together between Fort Bend County and Wichita Falls back in 94. And then they amended it to allow others to join in. And that was back in 1999. And then in 2015 is when Phil Robertson became president of the Board of Directors over Logic. And so it's similar to the other investment pools. Again, the investment pools go like this with their interest rates. It's just happened to be right now, Logic's has the highest interest. Texas term has been known to go high. So it just really depends on what time of year and where they are with their investments.
That's a significant difference in the year, though, that we get on that.
Yes, sir.
We have a board on this one. I don't remember us having it on the other ones. We may have it.
Again, Logic was the very first one. So other than the, it's still treated just like the other ones. They, I can't remember the history behind Logic. You...
I don't, I don't recall the exact history. They do have a board of trustees. You're basically entering into an interlocal agreement with other political subdivisions. And so that board of trustees, you know, is the governing body for the, for the entity, for those interlocal agreements. But it has, Jason, I'm not sure of the history, but it has been around, as you said.
It's been around, that they, so back, part of the reason it changed over with the board and originally how it was, there were some issues that they did have. They had some bad investments back then. And now it's been restructured, and that's now became one of the big investment pools. So if you were back and you had it back in the early 2000s, I can't remember when it was. So it'd been after 2015. So somewhere between 2000, 2015, somewhere between there, if you had the investment, you might not get all the interest you had. And so they had to restructure themselves, much like what TMR, TMRS had to do for the pensions when they came out and changed up the way that the accruals are occurring.
With the board, the three members of the board, did they take any action? Do they have to have a quorum, or can an individual make this?
And Murray, I'm not going to lie, I do not know. I...
I didn't see anything it said about having, having a quorum or having a... But aren't they set up the same way as text are and text pool?
They are, they are what they call day liquidities. So you put it in one day and you can get it out the next day. And so they are dollar, it's a dollar plus or minus is the way it is, is what they consider your daily liquidity. Again, the only difference that we're seeing with it is the interest rates. And ideally, we diversify. So as you see there, we already have three investment pools that we operate with. And so we, we try to just kind of move some money in between each one. With the bulk of our money still in Citizen State Bank is our primary bank account.
And Mayor Probst and Gessner, I did not see that addressed in the documentation. I did see a reference to the bylaws, but, you know, I'm sure that's addressed in the bylaws, but I have not reviewed those, as Mayor Bell has. But, you know, that issue for reform would be addressed in that document. Please don't have, don't have to bother with that.
Okay. Any further discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See none item carries. Item 6, consideration and possible action on the second reading of ordinance 1039-24, closing a 33-foot portion of Horlock Avenue right away within Block 1 of the Felver Edition located at 1210 Kettler, Navasota, Grimes County, Texas.
Mayor and council, normally we put this in a consent agenda, but since we just had one item... but since we just had one item, this is just the second reading of the ordinance that you passed at the previous meeting related to closing the 33-foot portion of Horlock Avenue right away. If you have any questions, Lou Pailly will come up and answer those questions.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the second reading of ordinance 1039-24.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guesner, second by Mr. Harris, to approve second reading of ordinance 1039-24. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item seven, consideration and possible action on resolution 760-24, authorizing the submission of an application to the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA Rural Development for Community Facilities Direct Loan, Grants, and Guaranteed Loans Program, and authorize the mayor and city manager to act as city's executive officer and authorize representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the USDA Rural Development Program.
Mayor and members, council, I'm gonna ask the chiefs, our chief, to come up here and explain to you what we're actually going to be using these funds for in just a minute. But last week, the Assistant City Manager and I were approached by USDA Rural Development pertaining to their grant and loan programs. They happened to go out online, saw our strategic plan, and as well as looked through our capital improvements that we've got going on, identified several of our projects, whether it was the dispatch consoles, whether there were some things at the airport, a lot of our utility projects, and just public safety projects in general, and wanted to make sure that we understood that there was these grants available, as well as loans. And so, so with that, the, the idea was, our immediate need was to come to you for the need to purchase our dispatch consoles. And so they said that, knowing that we, the grant program for that is $50,000 grant, up to $50,000. And so they recommended, hey, we could do a grant this year for your, one of your consoles, which one of them just went out, and then come back next year or do a similar type grant for the other. If so needed, we could also even enter into a loan agreement for the difference. You don't wanna do them all now, whatever it is. But this resolution you have before you is authorizing staff to move forward with the application for the grant and our, in any potential loan related to the dispatch consoles. They also, the USDA, will again offer other programs and loans through the Similar Community Facilities Direct Loan, Grants, and Guaranteed Loans Program, whether it's for a fire station, where they do a portion up to 75, up to 75% grant, plus loans. Those loans go out for 40 years. And currently, right now, interest rates for their loans is 3.5%, which is a great, great interest rate. The good thing about it is, these are, there's not a cutoff for these programs. So the federal government gets, gives them the money and says, go at it, and they start getting all these grants, the applications in. So it's first come, first served, and so there's not a cutoff, and so, and they do everything local. When I say local, it's in the Lufkin office, so they're out of Lufkin. And so at this time, I'll ask chief to come up and explain why we need these consoles, because we did have on the agenda, and was gonna come back to you on the 18th, related about moving forward with purchasing the consoles. And so I'll let him explain about the consoles and what, why we're needing consoles.
Mike Myers, Chief Police, obviously, the consoles are situated in dispatch, that's the communication between dispatchers and all the first responders. It contains all of our radios from all the radio rooms and reception. Our consoles now are 25-plus years old. Before, they were here before I got here, Jason. Before you?
They're around 30 years.
And they're pretty much, obviously, if one of them did break, just even a button breaks off, there, there's no parts available anywhere. There's no repairmen, nothing like that. The newer consoles, we started looking at through Motorola, the Z-tron system. It's more of a digital. It can, right now, if we need to say we wanna change channels from Tac 1 to Tac 2, or Channel 4, they have to manually go turn the radio channel to a different channel, then run back to the dispatch room and do that, where this will be all touchscreen. A lot more upgrades. It's, I mean, it's 30 years newer system, so. And we've already, we went through the process to look at it, and that's one of our last bits and pieces that we would need to have a complete upgraded radio system.
So again, council, you're not authorizing the purchase. What you're authorizing is, is to send the application in for this, and then we'll come back to you if granted, either a grant loan, or just the loan, or whatever it will be, to move forward with it. But again, if we move forward with it, you'll have something else in front of you to move forward with that purchase.
They, they approached us on this, right?
They, they did approach us.
Yeah, so that makes. Seems like a good sign. Our chances are probably better knowing that, yeah.
Again, they, they went out online and pulled up our strategic plan, looked at our capitals, projects that we have going on this year. I mean, they had it, they had it all written down on a piece of paper.
A good way for all of our tax money to come here.
Mr. Mayor, I am making a proposal, oh, bleh, I can't talk. I make a motion to approve resolution 760-24, authorizing the submission of the application to the United States Department of Agriculture for the Community Facilities Direct Loan, Grants, Guaranteed Loans Program to authorize the mayor and the city manager to act as the city's executive officer, authorize representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the USDA Rural Development Program.
Second. Motion by Ms. Peterson, second by Mr. Guesner. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item eight, consideration and possible action on new proposed Parks and Recreation Apartment Facility Use Policy. At this time, I'm gonna move to refer the, to Parks and Rec Department Facility Use Policy to the Subcommittee of Council Members Peterson and Fultz for further review.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. And that being the last item, would you?